Okay, and can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I can see my PowerPoint now. I can't get back to it. There we go. There you go. I think I'm gonna have to unshare and then share it again to, so I can see it. Alright, so we're gonna cover content that we've covered for the last three weeks, I guess. Chapters eighteen and nineteen, which were postpartum chapters, or eighteen through twenty, and then chapters eleven and twelve, which were pre-existing conditions and perinatal conditions. And then this week's chapters, which is seventeen, which are labor and birth complications. So talking about postpartum conditions and things that we're going to assess during postpartum. Breastfeeding issues. Or not, not really issues, but just things that we're going to assess with breastfeeding. If you have a mom who is is breastfeeding and she's having cramping and sometimes severe cramping, that's completely normal. With each baby, that can get worse, so you're gonna tell her that that's okay. Maybe she nursed her first baby and she remembers that cramping, but this is baby number two or three or four, and it's much more severe than it was with a previous baby. And that's okay, because with each baby, the uterus has been stretched more and it has to contract more to get back to that pre-pregnancy state. So moms do complain of more discomfort and more cramping with the nursing in order for that uterus to contract back down. So breastfeeding is more uncomfortable in those first few days after delivery than it is with like baby number one or maybe baby number two. So sometimes they think something is wrong because it is more uncomfortable. But with nursing, it releases oxytocin, which is a good thing because it does contract that uterus. It not only pulls that uterus back down to that pregnancy state, but it also decreases the bleeding. So moms who are breastfeeding have less bleeding after delivery than a mom who's bottle feeding. So there are really great benefits to breastfeeding. Besides the nutritional benefits for baby, there are also great healing and restorative benefits to mom as well. When's the best time to breastfeed your baby? Or
Right away.
Right away. Most beneficial time is those first couple hours after delivery. The baby is wide awake, so the baby's going to learn to latch and be more interested. We talk about that sleepy period happening after the first couple hours. So if the baby doesn't learn to latch right away, that sleepy period happens and sometimes they're sluggish and they don't latch well and getting them to wake up enough to nurse is hard if you're looking at four to six hours after delivery, then sometimes we have nursing issues. So right away is great. Do you all have any questions about breastfeeding?
No.
We talked a little bit yesterday about the, the natural aspect of it. If, if you put a baby right after delivery on mom's chest and you didn't even touch it, that baby would naturally migrate to the breast and start nursing on its own. Now, we're very quick to put the baby to breast and encourage it to nurse, but the, the baby will naturally figure out how to do that if you just do skin to skin with it. Babies are very naturally drawn to whether it's the odor of the breast milk or just that natural intuitive instinctive nature that, that we have as, as humans, that they will naturally be drawn to the breast to nurse. Skin to skin is something that is very important postpartum. We do it with moms, but we also do it with dads or the significant other that's in the room. And it's, it's a great bonding opportunity for the parents. And you know, occasionally there'll be a grandparent that wants to do skin to skin or a sibling, and those are amazing bonding opportunities. There, it's also really good for temperature maintenance of the baby. So if you have a baby who's maybe preterm and they want to hold the baby, keep it out of the warmer, but you're worried about the temperature staying up, put that baby skin to skin with them and then put a blanket over them and, and they're gonna stay warm. And that's great for bonding. So a couple postpartum things that, that we like to encourage. Perineal assessment during the postpartum period. Moms can't tell what's going on down there, so you need to look. You know, you can say, how's your bottom feeling or how's your perineum feeling? And they're probably going to say, oh, it's sore, but they really cannot tell. So it's your job as the nurse to look and see what's going on. You can have a hematoma that they really do not know is there. They're going to be sore, they're going to have burning. Even if there's no lacerations, sometimes I'll have physicians or midwives say, oh, you have a skid mark. And the, the way I will describe it to a patient is when you were a kid and you wrecked your bike and you didn't have a cut, so to speak, like a, a cut that you would stitch, you know, there, there was, there's no laceration there for a physician to, to stitch, but you just took the skin and you just ruffled it right up. Do you remember getting in the bath after you had a bike wreck and you just like scooted that skin up? And it, it just kind of ruffled it up and how bad that would burn? So when the baby comes out, sometimes it will like scoot that skin up and they'll have just ruffled skin and when the labia touch or their legs touch it, it burns really, really bad. And the first time they go to the bathroom, urine or just touching it burns really bad. So our perineal assessment, we need to know what's, what it looks like. Is it kind of, is the skin ruffled up? Is there a hematoma? And you know, make sure that we're documenting what the perineum looks like, you know, are there stitches? Are they intact? Because there are occasions that physicians will put stitches and then they will kind of pull loose. So we need to be making sure that they're well adapted if there's stitches there. If, if mom has an episiotomy or a laceration, what can we do to make the first bowel movements easier? What kind of interventions can we tell mom that is going to be important for those first bowel movements to be easier?
Stool softeners.
Stool softeners, increasing the fluid and the fiber in her diet.
Absolutely. Perfect. Those are the, the perfect answers. Increase fluid, increase fiber, stool softeners. I wouldn't give like a, a laxative, you know, sometimes moms will go home and, and think they'll take a laxative, encourage them to use stool softeners. Laxatives cause cramping and they've probably had enough cramping to do them a lifetime after labor and delivery. So be sure that you suggest stool softeners instead of laxatives. But the most natural way is to increase fiber and increase fluids. So that's perfect. What about just for like the episiotomy care and or lacerations? What would you do to just make that feel better?
Um, the ice and then the perineal wash when they go to the restroom.
We talk about those little bottles. We call them peri bottles. And that is perfect to rinse off. I, I usually tell moms when they go home, if they have something like baby visaderm or even baby shampoo, something that's not going to burn a baby's eyes is not gonna burn as much down there. So they can put a couple drops of baby shampoo in those peri bottles with the warm water, shake it up and rinse off with that, makes them feel cleaner. But the ice is, helps with the numbing on twenty, off twenty. The, the peri bottles, perfect. Sitz baths are really comforting, but I usually don't recommend those for about twenty-four hours before they start using the sitz baths. So those are all good things. We're gonna talk a little bit more later about vulva hematomas. And I've got a picture to show you. Occasionally, you will have a ruptured blood vessel in the vulva and if they know it initially, they can repair it, but sometimes the, the bleeding out in that area is, is slow at first and it's not recognized until later. So if you have a patient who's complaining of a lot of pain and it's unrelieved with the pain medication, their fundus is firm, their their vaginal bleeding is normal and, but they're still having a lot of pain, you're gonna look at the, you know, to see what's going on there. And if, if you can't determine what's causing that pain, you need to call the doctor. We, I met with a student this week and she missed like three questions on the last exam because she kept wanting to call the doctor. And it's like, usually there's something we can do to intervene. There's, there's usually an intervention that we can do immediately that may rectify the situation. So if we have a patient who's bleeding, actively bleeding, we're gonna massage the fundus and we're gonna see if we can slow that down. Because a lot of times, if the fundus is boggy, we'll massage and the bleeding will slow down. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that when we talk about bleeding complications. But if, if we've already addressed all of the, the complications or all of the interventions that we can do, we need to call the physician. And if we have a vulvular hematoma, that is something that we need to call the physician about because they can get really big, really bad and need surgical intervention. So I'll show you a picture of one of those in a little while. Any questions about perineal assessment or how we would care for the perineum?
I don't think so.
Family and cultural considerations during labor, delivery, postpartum is really important. You're going to have, depending on where you're at, a lot of different views on how family is involved in childbirth or not involved in childbirth. In Appalachia where I am located, all the families there. Someone has a baby and you have the entire family at the hospital. Sometimes you have the entire family in the room. The hospital I work at is very open to that. We gave up years ago fighting the culture. We have some, some policies as to how many technically can be in the room, but it's very much to physician and nurse preference. And my personal policy is if I can safely get to mom and I can safely get to the baby, I'm okay because I'm not gonna fight the culture. And mom's usually more content if if she's surrounded by her family in the culture that we live in. But I always ask her, who do you want in the room? And if, if she's someone who's very private and she wants her husband and her mother, then it's my job as the nurse to be an advocate for her and make sure that's who's in the room. So sometimes we kind of have to police the room as, as the nurse and, and protect her privacy. So that, that's what we're going to do. As regardless what culture we're in. But then you're gonna be in areas that the only person in the room is going to be the significant other and there will be no other family members. Hispanic culture. My, my daughter works in Southern Arizona and the maternal grandmother is very, very involved in the birth of the baby and the postpartum care of the baby. So specific cultures have very specific birth processes or expectations of people in, in the family that will be involved in the care. So just be aware of that in your community as to who may be involved or are expected to be involved and, and involve them in the care. Okay, um, we'll talk about some pre-existing and perinatal conditions. What do you know about diabetes and fetal development? Let's start there.
Baby can be born overweight.
Overweight, yes, especially if it's glycemic index out of control late in pregnancy, right? That's when you're gonna get macrosomia babies. What happens if mom's blood sugar is out of control early in pregnancy? What are you gonna see?
Anemia? Or is that, that's due to anemia?
Yeah, yeah. Well, what happens with the baby if mom's blood glucose is out of control early in pregnancy? We see fetal anomalies develop in diabetics or even gestational diabetics when glycemic control is out of control early in pregnancy. So early development, you see fetal anomalies. Late glycemic index out of control, you see macrosomia, you see big babies. High blood pressure, what do you see? What do you see from the baby if mom's high, his blood pressure is high?
Baby's blood pressure or I guess their heart rate will be high?
No, not so much. Think, when you think, when you think high blood pressure with mom, think of lack of perfusion to baby.
Okay, so can it fuse their growth?
Exactly, absolutely. If mom's blood pressure is high, the placenta is not perfusing to the baby well. So you're gonna see intrauterine growth restriction. And that's gonna lead to small babies. Okay, diabetes, late in pregnancy leads to large babies, high blood pressure due to lack of perfusion leads to little babies.
Good.
Autoimmune disorders. What, what are a couple of, of the big ones? Have you guys had med surg yet?
I'm having a surgery now.
Okay, what are, what are a couple of your big med surg autoimmune disorders?
Graves' disease?
Yeah. I'm thinking a little more common. What about lupus or rheumatoid arthritis?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so sometimes we're managing patients that have those disorders and the medications that we use to manage those disorders may have to be discontinued or altered to another drug during pregnancy. So you know, we're, we're managing these patients through their pregnancy with a lot of symptoms. Okay, so they, they can have really uncomfortable pregnancies and sometimes end up delivering their babies early in order to kind of juggle their autoimmune disorder and, and their pregnancy. So they, they decide to terminate the pregnancy a little bit early and then they're, they end up with a premature baby. Because they, they really need to get delivered because of their autoimmune disorder. So that can be very significant in, in their pregnancy and their health. Gestational diabetes is not diabetes that's not present chronically or prior to pregnancy. It usually develops at twenty weeks or greater. Tell me what you know about preeclampsia.
And cause seizures? Very severe?
Yes, that's, that is the the line in the sand when you go from preeclampsia to eclampsia, isn't it? So we're watching for signs of impending seizures when we have a patient who's preeclamtic. Once they have a seizure, they're no longer preeclamtic, they are eclamtic. Okay, so that, that's what we are trying to prevent when we have a patient who's preeclamtic. What drug do we use for preeclampsia to prevent seizures?
Magnesium sulfate.
Absolutely. If you start a patient on magnesium sulfate, what antidote do you want to have on the floor before you start that med?
Palsim glaucony.
Absolutely. Perfect. What is the blood pressure that is determinant of preeclampsia?
One sixty over forty? No, no, sorry, one sixty over ninety.
One forty over ninety is preeclampsia. Severe preeclampsia is one sixty over one ten. Yeah, and when you get those readings, do you remember the criteria in order to use the reading for, to make a diagnosis? You, you have to have two readings at that level or higher and they have to be four hours apart.
Would you give me the, it had the highest blood pressure again? I thought I had written it one. I don't see it.
Sure. Preeclampsia is one forty over ninety and severe preeclampsia is one sixty over one ten.
Thank you.
And with those readings, if you have a patient come in the, the office or the hospital and you get a high reading that meets that criteria, we often, you know, if we're not keeping them hospitalized, we often will let them go home or go have lunch and then come back and, and get another reading several hours later just to see that it's still up. Because you know, sometimes they'll come in, they've been rushing around, we'll get a high reading and then a few hours later, it's, it's fine. But it warrants watching. Okay, so or you know, they may even bring them in two days in a row to make sure that they, they have two high readings before they make the diagnosis. What other symptoms are you looking at with preeclampsia besides the high blood pressure? You guys are awesome. You have all kinds of answers. I heard proteinuria.
Blurred vision?
Blurred vision. Yes, any kind of visual, we, we categorize it as visual disturbances. It can be blurred vision, it can be spots before their eyes, it could be squiggly lines. They, I've heard all kinds of weird visual things. So we, we say visual disturbances. Yeah, headaches, yes. Severe headaches that are unrelieved with Tylenol. What else?
Um, hyperactive deep tendon on the reflexes.
Absolutely. Yes, hyperactive reflexes.
And then possible positive clonus.
Yes, very good. Good. So when we start magnesium on these patients, we're doing it for seizure control, right, to prevent seizures. It will also lower that blood pressure, but that's not the reason we're doing it. It's just a happy accident that it happens to lower the blood pressure. So sometimes, you know, we may also administer anti-hypertensives, but a, a nice effect of the magnesium sulfate is that it does lower the blood pressure. So that's, that's a nice little benefit. What else does the magnesium sulfate do that you're going to be monitoring this patient closely for?
Toxicity.
Yes, it, it, they can get mag-toxic because we typically will use a four to six milligram loading dose and then run it like two or three grams an hour after that. So we're going to be monitoring their, their magnesium lab levels, but regardless of what their, their, I mean, you're going to monitor their lab levels really closely to see what their blood level of magnesium is. But that's not a really good indicator. You can't, you can't be the nurse that sits at the desk and looks at those lab levels when they come in. You have to look at the patient. I've seen patients that have had a hu- horribly high magnesium level and they look fine. They're doing okay, but they look like they should be dead looking at their lab level. But I've also seen patients that have had what appears to be not even a therapeutic level of magnesium in their blood and they are at death's door. So you really cannot not look at your patient. So when we're looking at our patient and monitoring our patient, what are we looking for to assess for magnesium toxicity?
Respiratory depression.
Yes, respiratory depression. We're, we're counting respirations, right? That's not the patient you can go in and look at him and say, yep, they're breathing. You have to count those respirations. Okay, what else are we looking for?
Nausea, vomiting, facial flushing, retention of urine.
Yeah, the nausea, vomiting, facial flushing, those are kind of my least worrisome. Yeah, they're, they're aggravating, they're annoying to the patient, but concerning to me, though, those are some of my least worrisome. I'm worried about my patient breathing. Okay.
Reflexes?
Yeah, yeah, reflexes. Reflexes and breathing kind of all go together, don't they? And the seizure activity, if they're hyperreflexic, they're more likely to seizure on you. So we're checking their reflexes.
What about retention of urine?
Yes, that's important too. And we're gonna get there in just a second. Think about your reflexes. Hyperreflexic means you're a little more likely to seizure. So as their reflexes start going back to normal, then we, we think they're, I mean, they always have that potential to seizure on you. So don't get too comfortable as the reflexes go, you know, start decreasing. don't get too comfortable as the reflexes go, you know, start decreasing. But as those reflexes are not as, as hyper and they start to diminish, and then if you are losing reflexes, think about those reflexes also indicate what the diaphragm's doing, you know? The diaphragm's a muscle too, so if we're losing deep tendon reflexes, how well is that diaphragm working? So as we're losing those reflexes, we have to think about their respirations, that's all connected. So we're monitoring those reflexes, we're watching those respirations closely. And, and we're still monitoring for, for seizures, obviously. Okay, then you mentioned urinary output. How much urine should we expect an hour?
Minimum, is it twenty per hour? No, no.
Minimum's thirty.
Thirty milliliters per hour.
Yeah, minimum's thirty milliliters per hour. If you have a test question, it may not say a minimum of thirty milliliters per hour, it may give you like a four hour urine output. So just make sure that you're having at least thirty milliliters per hour out in that four hour period, or it's concerning. Okay, and that's something that you would call the doctor about because they're not perfusing the kidney well, and you can certainly have kidney damage. Okay, um, you guys covered that really well.
And wouldn't you assess the serum creatinine and, uh, along with a urine output?
You do, yes, you, you assess their creatinine level and you're also looking, uh, patients can also go into HLP syndrome. With, after, you know, once they've developed preeclampsia, um, HLP syndrome can follow. Are you familiar with HLP syndrome?
I am, because I had it.
Oh, man, well, you were a fortunate individual. Do you realize that twenty-four to thirty-seven percent of clients that develop HLP syndrome do not survive it?
Oh, wow.
That's a pretty high percentage. Yeah, that's a pretty high mortality rate for individuals in, in our country that healthcare is very good. HLP syndrome stands for hemolysis of red blood cells, increased liver enzymes, and low platelet count. So we're watching all of those labs. So it, it's, we're doing a lot of, uh, blood work and watching a lot of labs on these pre-eclantic patients because we're, we're monitoring to see that it doesn't continue into something else. If we have a patient who is going into HLP syndrome, our interventions for that are anti-hypertensives. Our mag is still on board to prevent seizures and immediate delivery of the baby. And we're, we're hoping that that baby is at that point of viability because that is the only cure for HLP syndrome, is get the baby delivered. How far along were you when you had HLP?
Um, thirty-four weeks.
Okay, that's, that's ideal.
I just remember the epigastric pain being awful.
Yes, and, and why do you have epigastric pain with HLP?
Oh, my goodness. That's the, like, upper right quadrant area and the, and epigastric is where I remember it being.
What other organ is right there?
I'm drawing a blank.
Go back to anatomy.
I know.
Got your stomach, and then what else is right there? The liver, yeah, liver enzymes are elevated, liver gets enlarged, then gorged, and, and that causes lots of pain. Yeah, you can actually feel, patients who have that engorged, enlarged liver, you can actually feel it protruding. And it's very painful.
Sounds like everything during pregnancy is all over the place.
It is, isn't it? I, I like the pictures that, um, show the baby like pushing everything out of the way. And, you know, people complain of, um, heartburn and indigestion, and you can see the stomach is all squished. And like, well, no wonder, look at that, you know, or bowel issues and the, the bowels, you can see, um, intestines just like pushed everywhere. And it's like, no wonder we have bowel issues. Look where, where the bowels are just smushed everywhere because the baby just moves everything. And your, you know, back pain, you know, your back starts to sway, so you're, you're going to have pain and discomfort. I ca- I can't imagine not.
Yeah, I ended up delivering at thirty-five weeks, but, um, they were gonna induce me, but by the time I got there to be induced that morning, um, my water had already broken.
And, you know, sometimes nature just takes its course.
I think my body knew I was done.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's good. A, a lot of times when we try to induce these people, the induction goes very quickly, very smoothly because their, their body is ready to take, you know, take care of it, you know, they, it, the, the body itself realizes it needs to heal itself, and the way that it does that is terminates this pregnancy. So those inductions are usually pretty, pretty simple.
Yeah, it was, it was really fast.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing. Our bodies are amazing. They're, they're just, it, it's amazing childbirth, um, is just so spectacular. Um, how long did it take you to recover after?
Um, let me think, which, I have five kids, so let me think about which one that is. Um, I don't, I wanna say, like, I had a really rough first day, um, because I got there at like five in the morning, and I had delivered him by nine. And I wanna say the, the next afternoon I was starting to feel better.
That, that's really quick. U- usually these patients do, um, immediately, things start to revert back to normal. But, you know, it, it takes a little while before all their labs and, you know, all of the inflammation and the, the water retention and, you know, it, it just, it takes a little while before things go back to normal.
Yeah, I wanna say they kept me for like four or five days.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty normal. Okay, um, you guys did well with preeclampsia. Um, so for exam purposes, whether it's your exam two or NCLEX or HESI, eclampsia and help a little bit, um, you, you need to know your signs and symptoms, you're gonna need to know your interventions in your treatment with magnesium sulfate and, and how to monitor a patient with magnesium, for sure. Those will always be important. Premature labor, um, I don't know that there's a whole lot that's gonna be covered on that. We talk about treatment of premature babies and management of premature babies. We'll talk about that a little in a, a couple of weeks. Probably what would be important would be to know that if you have premature labor, we would treat it with, um, the drugs that we talked about this week, um, which is it's not my time, um, and the drugs used with, with that, um, acronym, tributaline being the one that we probably use most often. Um, another name for it is breathing. Um, if we know a, a patient is going to deliver and we can't really stop it, we're gonna use beta-methazone and try to mature that baby's lungs. Um, we like to get it in twenty-four to forty-eight hours before delivery because beta-methazone causes surfactant production in the baby's lungs. And the surfactant production will, um, keep the lungs from sticking together. The lubricant in the lungs, um, helps so when the baby takes its first breath, the, the alveoli don't stick together, they will, um, open up easily when the, when the air goes in the lungs. Um, and even with extremely premature babies, and maybe we're even having to ventilate themsel- ourselves. Um, they're not breathing on their own, that, um, surfactant being available will still lubricate the lungs, so, um, as we're putting the air in, they, it opens up very easily. So with premature labor, we're, um, we're first gonna try to stop it with something like tributaline or breathing. Usually is our first line of, uh, defense drug. And then if, if we know it's not gonna stop, then we're gonna try to get a steroid onboard that will produce, have the baby produce the surfactant to help mature. We, we say mature the baby's lungs, and that's what we mean by that is, um, produce surfactant. So they will, um, breathe better on their own. Okay, um, I don't wanna keep you all day, so let's talk about labor and birth complications. That was, um, things that we talked about this week. Excessive bleeding during, um, birth and/or shortly thereafter, and what are we gonna do about that? The, the biggest reason for, uh, postpartum hemorrhage is the fundus not, um, staying firm after delivery. And the way that we can, um, rectify that is to massage that fundus, keep it nice and firm. A couple of things that will prevent that from happening is if the, the bladder's full, it will, um, not allow the fundus or the uterus to contract. So we may have to either have the patient void, or if they have an epidural and they're unable to empty their bladder, we may straight cath them because we can massage the fundus. And if the, the bladder's full, the fundus will, uh, of the uterus will kind of tilt to the side. And it won't, it, it won't stay midline and it will be kind of off-centered. Um, and that's kind of an indicator that the bladder's full. So if you see that, um, or you have a question on an exam that talks about that, um, you know that you probably need to empty the bladder and then massage the fundus again. When, when you are assessing a patient and if they've had excessive bleeding, things like increasing your IV is good if they're getting dehydrated. But it's also, um, important that you address the, the bleeding issue immediately, like massaging the fundus. Um, if they're saturating pads, you're going to want to address the issue before you call the doctor, before you increase the fluids. So you're gonna address the issue first. If you have done all of those things, like, if, if we're looking at it from a test question or a quiz perspective, um, if, if the question that says you've already massaged the fundus, and it won't stay firm, and there's still saturating pads, then you may call the physician. But those are the things you're going to do first before you call a physician. Abruptio placenta or placenta previa. Um, know the difference in the type of blood that you see, whether it's painful or it's not painful. Um, abruption, does the word abruption to you just sound, um, aggressive or painful? Or, um, it, it does to me, it just sounds, um,
Sudden thing, like a sudden sharp pain.
Yes, I, I think so too. So in, in my mind, when I hear abruption, I'm like, ow, you know? And it is painful, the, the uterus becomes rigid, the abdomen becomes, um, firm. And it is painful. Um, placenta previa, on the other hand, there is no pain. It, it is painless bleeding. Um, abruption is dark red bleeding. Previa is bright red bleeding. Um, a placenta previa is when the placenta is, is attached to the uterus very low. Um, either crossing the cervix or very low line to where when the cervix starts to open up, um, you'll, you'll have blood vessels exposed and it starts to bleed out. You can't deliver a baby, um, through a placenta that is crossing the cervix. Um, if it's a very low-line placenta, and as, um, the cervix, i- if it's just low-line and it's not crossing the cervix, sometimes as the cervix starts to open and kind of pull back, it will, will pull back and, and you can deliver a baby. But if it's crossing cervix, you cannot. Um, an abruption, you never really know when it's, it's going to happen. It, it's a sudden thing. Um, things that can cause an abruption are, um, injuries, car accidents, um, drug use, cocaine is a big one. Um, if you have a patient come in and they are, their abdomen is rigid, they're having bleeding, um, you know they have a history of drug use, one of my questions and you know, I, if you look at a prenatal and, and you see that they have a history of drug use, one of the questions is, have you used cocaine in the last few hours? And I, I live across the, the river from, um, southern Ohio, which is one of the highest, um, drug use areas in the nation, and it, it is not uncommon. I, I have to say I've seen more abruptions due to cocaine use than I, I ever would, would want. Um, so that's a question that we ask. But you can often determine the two just by looking at the kind of blood that's coming out and filling their abdomen. And then like for placenta previa, um, an ultrasound, a, a quick ultrasound shows you the placement of the placenta. So you can see that very easily. Abruption you can see on the ultrasound as well, it's not as easily identified, um, because often there's, there's more blood and you, you, you can't always tell, um, that, that the placenta is abrupting. But you can, with placenta previa, you can see where the placenta is attached, so you know that that, what's happening there. Um, but placenta previa definitely is easily identified, uh, with an ultrasound machine.
I had placenta previa when I was pregnant with my twins, and I had like six major bleeds before I finally delivered. But the fir- very first time I'd gotten up in the middle of the night to go to the bathroom, I thought my water broke. Like, you don't have any kind of symptoms with it.
No, yeah, I had a friend the same way. She only had one pregnancy, but she would wake up in just a pool of blood. And before she ended up delivering her baby, because she delivered early, um, they ended up admitting her to the hospital because she lived like a half hour from any medical center. And she was so upset because they admitted her, and I said, just get over it because you're gonna wake up dead in your bed.
It's so scary.
It is, you, you have no idea until, like you, like you said, um, you, you think your water's broken because there, there is no feeling, you have no idea it's happening. Yeah, it, it is very, very scary. Okay, infections. What is your drug of choice for chorioamniitis?
Penicillin.
Penicillin.
Penicillin, very good, yes. And what is chorioamniitis?
That's the, um, bacterial infection of the fetal membranes and the amniotic fluid.
Perfect, you guys are good, yes. What, what do we do preventative for, um, C-sections to prevent infections? It's not a trick question.
Do you give, um, antibiotic?
We do, yeah. Yeah, I've seen, um, quiz questions, test questions, HESI questions that ask things like that. It's like, what, what do you do prophylactically, uh, to prevent post-op cesarean infections? And it is, um, give antibiotics, so that's why I asked that. Okay, we, we talked about bleeding earlier. What medications do we give postpartum to prevent bleeding?
Oxytocin.
Oxytocin. Um, another name for oxytocin is
Pitocin.
Pitocin, yes. Um, and that drug is given in an IV or it can be given IM as well, but most of the time our patients have an IV for delivery. So after the placenta is delivered, we will give pitocin IV, which causes the uterus to contract and it slows down the bleeding and, and um reduces the size of the uterus. If there's excessive bleeding, sometimes they will use methogen. Methogen cannot be given IV. If it is given IV, it can cause a stroke. So methogen is given IM. So pitocin or oxytocin is given IV or IM. Methogen is never given IV. And what clients is methogen contraindicated in?
Hypotensive.
Yes, we don't give it to patients who are hypertensive. Very good. More birth um complications, shoulder dystocia? When are we going to expect shoulder dystocia?
Maybe with a mom who has gestational diabetes, has um a larger baby.
Absolutely. Those macrosomia babies where we can expect shoulder dystocia. Um, what are like three things that you can do if you have shoulder dystocia?
Uh, suprapubic pressure, Gaskins or Roberts maneuvers.
Yes, what is Gaston's maneuver or position?
That, the like knees and um hands position.
Yeah, you flip them over. That's probably the la- that'd be the last thing that I would do. But usually, most of the time, um McRoberts position will open up the pelvis. That's pulling their knees back. I tell patients, I'm gonna help you get your knees back to your ears. But it opens up the pelvis um to its largest diameter. And then um, well, you, you have to, you need two people. Um, one to help hold each foot back or each leg back and then you do suprapubic pressure to kind of pop that little shoulder underneath the pubic bone. And that will usually do it. I have it a few times turned them over, but that, that is, um, that's your three maneuvers that will, will help you get those babies out. Um, what are complications to the baby? If you have shoulder dystocia and you have a hard time getting those babies out, what are things that you're gonna look at that baby and, and assess for injury?
Their head and their bones.
What kind of um Yeah, we're gonna look for fractured clavicles, aren't we? We're gonna look for brachial plexus injuries because when we're pulling that head up or down trying to dislodge that shoulder underneath the bone, we stretch the neck and we can, we can cause brachial plexus injuries to the arm, which can cause nerve damage. But we also can, can fracture that clavicle. Okay, um, we talked a lot. Repeat, um, the Gaston's position, McRoberts, what was the third one? Um, it's, it's called suprapubic pressure. You just take your hand and I usually use like my fist or the side of my hand and push right above the pubic bone because the little shoulder is stuck right there and you just put pressure right above the pubic bone and push that shoulder down underneath it. It will pop the shoulder right underneath the pubic bone and hopefully pop it right out.
Are you saying supra or super?
Supra.
Okay, I wanna, I can, bear by.
Yeah, it's, it's just right a- above it. Like where, where you feel the, you'll feel those um pubic bone and just right above it. And usually you'll feel, you'll feel the pu- pubic bone, but you'll feel something really firm right above it. And that's the baby's shoulder and you wanna push on that and it, it will slip right underneath the pubic bone.
And then do you do that like kind of during the contraction to kind of help with gravity and the contraction and then pushing? Okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And you know, there are, there are times you, you have just like three minutes to get the baby out once that, because at this point the head is already out. So you, you are, you know, time is not your friend at this point. So you know, the, the doctor's going to stay, tell you when to do it because he's gonna be pulling and, and um positioning the baby's head and trying to pull on that shoulder in a certain direction or I don't know, pulling maybe not the right word, but trying to twist and maneuver the shoulder uh usually using his thumbs to turn it. And then if you push down and try to pop it down under the pubic bone at the same time, so you're, you're working together to um move that baby's shoulder underneath that pubic bone. And then at the same time, you've got mom's knees back and you have the pelvis open as, as far as, as you can get it open. Okay, and prolapse cord. What position do we put mom in for a prolapse cord?
Trendelenburg.
Trendelenburg, if she's really, really numb from an epidural, um ideally would be knee chest. Okay, we, we'd get her up on her knees and her chest on the bed. That's gonna get the weight of the baby off of her pel- or off of the cervix. Um, so that's actually a better position than Trendelenburg. Now, um, the only way to get that baby out is a C-section. Okay, you can't deliver passing a, a cord prolapse. So once we get to surgery, then she's gonna have to be on her back in, in the Trendelenburg position to, to do the surgery to get her, her baby out. But ideally, it's, it's gonna keep the weight of the baby off of the cervix if you get her in knee chest. So um as, as long as mom is able in, epidurals are better now to where they have more functional movement. So my position of choice is to get her in knee chest, which is helpful to me because you're also holding the, you know, you're doing an exam and pushing the baby's head up off the cervix. So you're kind of stuck there until um you get that baby out. And then once you get the patient um to surgery, then you're gonna have them on the surgery table on their back. And you're still gonna keep um your hand inside pushing the baby's head up off the cervix, up off that cord until the, the physician reaches in and takes the baby off your hand. So um, it's, it's an emergent situation. You need to get the baby out quickly. But position of choice would be knee chest and then Trendelenburg if, if that's the only other option you have. Okay, we got a couple of quick questions here and I'll let you guys get on with your day. A nurse is caring for a client who delivered a baby vaginally one hour ago. The nurse notes that the client is saturating a perineal pad every fifteen minutes and the fundus remains boggy despite fundal massage. Which actions should the nurse take first? Okay, notice that it's every fifteen minutes and she's still boggy after massage.
A, notify the provider.
A, no- notify the healthcare provider immediately, administer oxytocin as prescribed, start an IV line of lactated ringers or massage the fundus. Which did you say?
If you're already, A, because you're already massage the fundus.
Yeah, you've already massaged the fundus, so yeah, A. You, you've already intervened as much as you could, right? Okay, a laboring client with severe preeclampsia is receiving an intravenous infusion of magnesium sulfate. Which assessment finding requires the nurse's immediate intervention? Deep tendon reflexes of plus one, urine output of twenty-five milliliters per hour, fetal heart rate of one thirty, complaints of feeling warm and flushed. B, twenty-five milliliters per hour is not normal. It should be at least thirty or more, right?
Right.
Okay, did somebody say D? No, everybody said B. Okay, perfect. Okay. A nurse is assessing a postpartum client who delivered vaginally two hours ago. The client reports severe perineal pain, not relieved by analgesics and the nurse notes firm, a firm fundus, um minimal vaginal be- bleeding and swelling with discoloration of the vulva. Which actions should the nurse take first? Apply ice, an ice pack to the perineal area, document the finding in the medical record, notify the healthcare provider, administer uh prescribed opioid pain medication.
D.
Nope, try again. D, yeah, because it, it's two hours ago, everything else looks okay, right? And she's having severe pain, severe perineal pain. Every mom hurts. They, they all do. Um, unrelieved by her analgesics. She's, she has swelling with discoloration. We can put an ice pack on, but s- severe pain should not be what she's experiencing. And analgesics should take care of some of the discomfort. She shouldn't still be having severe pain. And we, we've given the pain medicine, the fundus is firm, minimal bleeding, the, this severe pain isn't normal. Okay, um, the next picture, I want you to see what a um vulva hematoma can look like if it's not managed appropriately. So we need to call the healthcare provider.
Yeah.
If we let it go and we don't do something about it, the, this is what can happen. So we, we really need to make sure that we intervene. And the student that I was, I was teasing her la- this past week about you need to do something before you call the doctor. Um, this is one of those cases that we do need to call the doctor because we don't wanna let this happen. If everything else is normal, you know, vaginal bleeding's good, fundus is firm. Um, and we, we are noticing some discoloration. That means she's bleeding out in that area. This, this just isn't right, so we're gonna call. And you know, the worst ca- thing he can say is, you bothered me. You know, we're still a patient advocate. Alrighty. Be sure you take advantage of as many of the live sessions as you can. That's really awesome. You have an opportunity to ask questions if there's something you don't understand. People present a lot of different ways. So take advantage of that. If uh there's anything I can do for you, reach out to me. You have my um cell number here and you can always um find me by email too. It was great to have you join us today and best wishes on your exam. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Have a great week. So you question one? I, I didn't hear you, Dennis.
Yes, please. Just displaying. Uh, do you mind displaying it on the screen? Yeah, I just wanted to
Okay, alrighty.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. You have a great week.
Same to you. Bye.
Bye.